All right, thirty five, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of North Dakota. One nation, one ground, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
So I would like to read this proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil. By wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air. Producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper. Wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas. And beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy. And spiritual renewal. I, Becky Schamber, Mayor of the City of Hiawatha, do hereby proclaim April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. As Arbor Day in the City of Hiawatha. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So. There we go. Moving on to the consent agenda. Anything to add, Brad?
Uh, nothing else, right?
No entertaining motion?
Hello, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moving second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, done.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Motion pass five zero. Moving on to old business, the Parks and Rec tractor bid, tractor bids. Stacy?
Uh, apologize I wasn't here last meeting for any comments on this. But upon reviewing those bids and then just kind of getting caught up on your discussion. I, I have recommended that we reject all the bids. Um, that we've received for a new lease on a park tractor and go out to bid for a lease to purchase. Um, agreement. The tractor we currently have is not necessarily what we're hoping to have. Um, if we are pursuing something that we're going to keep. Um, we need something with a little bit more horsepower. Um, and then I guess Brad, if you want to jump in on this, on some of the things we've done.
Yeah, so I know that in the discussion that I've had with both the board staff and board staff as well. The contract that we do have is it's underpowered with the design of the bucket. When we lift up a load of dirt with a front bucket, the back end will come off the ground. And so it's just, it's a little bit underpowered for what we need to use this for. Which is why I'm not recommending that we just go ahead and purchase that factor for the forty thousand that's left on it. I think that a larger tractor is probably is necessary for the future needs here. You know, but what a lease purchase will do for us is it will just allow us to have. A little more of a stable, something that we can budget for. And then at the end of that lease purchase, we'll actually own that piece of equipment instead of turning that back in. It's a tool that we've used in the past on quite a few pieces of equipment that we've purchased over the years. And it just saves us from having that one large payment. Cause that can cause some instability with it, with a budgeting process. And so that's the reason why I think a lease purchase would be good. Although there will be a purchase option that we also have within that, um, within the proposal that we send out. Uh, to consider at the time and when we get those bits back. And so we can really get either way there. I would, I would recommend these purchase options, but really, I mean, there will be other options there too.
I'd definitely like to see us get a tractor if we're gonna buy one that actually meets their needs. I mean, lifting dirt with a rare income, that's not. We need something a little more, with some more horsepower and strength.
Yes.
Did you want to make that to a motion?
I would like to make a motion to look for bids to lease. To own a tractor for the Parks and Rec Department.
And to reject all bits, all current bits.
And to reject all current bits.
So a second?
Second.
It's been moving a second, moved in second to reject all bids received and. Reboot for at least own tractor for the Parks and Rec Department. Any further discussion? If not, done.
Oh, neighbor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass five zero. Thank you, Stacy. Moving on to new business, um, number two, the CDBG Housing Administrator.
So the CDBG Housing Administrator, this is part of the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Project that we have going on in town. This is a three hundred thousand dollars that we have towards people being able to renovate various houses in town. We've been going through this process for nearly about the past six months. And this qualified housing administrator is just yet another step in that process. And so we went out to bid for qualified housing administrators. We got two bids back. One was from the Governmental Assistance Services. And my second bid was from the South Central Kansas Economic Development District. And with these bills, what I could see was that both, both organizations are very well qualified to handle that. Handle the administration of this. Um, the price is very, very similar. I mean, it's, it's ten percent of the projects of thirty thousand dollars. Would be the total price and that's depending on how, but I, I, I think Jack North from, from Government Assistant Services. Is on, so he can jump in at any time and correct me if I misspeak, but. It's ten percent of the project and so my recommendation here is that we go with GES. Really, the only thing I have to differentiate between the two is that we've typically worked with Government Assistant Services in all of our CDBG projects. Including our North Station Project, they've handled all of that for us out there. We've been well satisfied. And so my recommendation is just that we go, we, um. Or the bid for qualified CDBG Administrator to Governmental Assistance Services. For the Housing Rehabilitation Project, just based on the previous experience that we've had with them. I can progress over again if you have anything to add.
Thank you, Brad. I don't have anything else to add. Um, all that was seemed pretty accurate to me. Great, great job.
And the entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion toward the bid of qualified CDBG Administrator to. Governmental Assistance Services for. CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Project.
Second. It's been moving second to approve, um, Governmental Assistance Services for the CDBG. Um, how's your rehabilitation, rehabilitation project? Any further discussion? If not, done.
Oh, neighbor.
Aye.
Motion pass five zero. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, everybody. My pleasure.
Moving on to our next item, the aquatic park starting platforms. Which we've made these for how many years?
Yes, this has been definitely a discussion for many years. Um, we've spoken with the Hiawatha Swim, Swim Team about this several different times. Just since I've been, um, a part of HPNR. Um. The heat at this whole time has been concrete, really. So, uh, there's a lot of concrete work going on at the Aquatic Park, if anybody has noticed right now. So that should, um, meet these needs. So, um, I appreciate Brad did a lot of homework on this, but. I chose to approve the purchase of six starting platforms and six mounting brackets. Um, from recreational supply, um, and we're going to use our upper money for that. And then hopefully we'll have better swim meets.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of six starting platforms and six mounting brackets. Cost sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty from recreational supply.
Second.
Then moving second to purchase the starting platforms and start six mounting brackets. Any further discussion? Not done?
Oh, neighbor.
Okay.
Motion pass five zero. We didn't make you work for that, Stacy. I'm kind of disappointed. Um, next item was the fireworks ban discussion. So Brad?
So originally what had prompted this discussion as an organization was looking to possibly sell fireworks within the city limits of Hiawatha, which is currently not allowed by ordinance. Uh, that organization has since declined to sell fireworks due to many factors. And so they're not seeking to do that at this time. However, I, I did leave this on the agenda just because last time this is, we discussed this at the June twenty fourth meeting, twenty twenty four. If they, if we, if the commission had any, um. Desire to make any changes that would give us time to possibly get something done this year. As far as ordinance changes go, um, I, I really don't, I don't have a lot of recommendations here. It's just, I have, I've attached some information about what surrounding communities do. And just to kind of prompt that discussion, but like I said, say, the original. Part of this discussion, they, that our organization was pulled out of wanting to sell fireworks. So I'll just open it up to any discussion at this time.
All right, I'll say that I did research on this last year and I know that we were almost one of the only towns within seventy miles. I don't remember exactly what it was, but that has these restrictions. Um, especially just so we can, it'd be nice to have a fireworks stand in town to have the option. For someone to do that. I, I do think that someone will, will do it. They just don't wanna. It's hard to find space out, outside of town and stuff like that. So. Um, and I also have had lots of complaints every year with people saying that they don't even have the means or the ra- a ride to get out to the. To the lake to do fireworks. And I really do think that. The only people we're restricting are probably some grandparents with their kids that want to just go let some fireworks off in their driveway. Um, I think the people late at night are still gonna do it and without any problem like they do every year. So I don't really see any need to have the restriction myself. Um, I think we could also still say, you know, have a, have a curfew of some kind where you could at least have. Um. Or, I don't know, I'd let Nikki figure that out, but. I, I think there's lots of options other than how we're doing it now. And I, I think that it's time that there is zero fire threat, in my opinion, for that. Um, I'm out fighting fires every year and, uh, last year I watched fireworks all through. Um, Salt Lake City, so, um, it's pretty irrelevant here.
I did attach some information, like I said, from Fall City and Seneca. Some of the references that they have, kind of how they handle fireworks. You know, just far as discussion, I reached out to several commu- surrounding communities to see how it was handled. And, and they were the ones that responded to me last year.
I honestly wouldn't mind seeing it myself. Um, I don't shoot out fireworks, but I know little kids next door, they like to see it. As long as it's controlled, I think it's okay.
I think even with our current ordinance that we have, the police department has a difficult time controlling that. If you open it up citywide, um, and try to put a curfew on it. It's, I don't know, I think it'd be really difficult to try to enforce that curfew.
I don't know, I'm kind of divided on it. I, I still worry about as many pet owners as we have in this, in the city. And you're shooting off bigger fireworks. I mean, if, I don't, I don't mind the snakes and the little poppers. And you know, those little, the little things like that. I don't know that we need to be shooting off. Fountains and roman candles and all that stuff, but I, I don't know. I don't know if we want to try to, how we would write this, if it's all or none. I mean, I, I don't really. I don't know.
Well, again, I, I travel all over the world and Salt Lake City was, had fireworks everywhere. I just feel that it's absolutely ridiculous to not let kids have a fountain even in town. I mean. It's, it's the Fourth of July and we're having Fourth of July for a reason. And people need to remember that. There's more to fireworks than. Than fireworks itself. And there's places all over that I travel to every year that have fireworks all through town. And they're in fire burn areas where it's actually a legit concern. So. At this point, we're just, we're just restricting kids because again, the, the older people that want to let fireworks off at night, they just do it. And then nobody cares what, you know, the only people we're restricting right now is some kids, but their grandparents. Cause that will ensure you that the people that are doing it all night long are still gonna do it. Actually, if it's legal, they might not do it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, I think about the veterans and talking about the animals, et cetera. I just don't see the police department be able to control curfews. I just wouldn't agree with changing the ordinance. I'll just put that out there.
Again, I, you know, was there any towns within that, that had a ban? I think it was Johnson County at them.
You have to get down, of course, Lawrence and Kansas City area, probably started running it.
Every other small town around, around us can handle doing and, and have fireworks. So I feel that it's irrelevant that we can't do it here. Maybe, I mean, do you have any input on this?
I would not encourage it just for our call board and just the animals. We have a very minstrel segment, if you need, who would want to do it? So you don't have a proposal on the majority for the people. We have to have a place they can do it in city life already. They're, they have the time and dates and a lot of people out there.
How many calls do we have? Cause people are already letting them off in town. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. Nobody's following the rules besides. The, the kids with their grandparents. Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I wouldn't say that nobody's following the rules. I don't, I don't hear a lot on my house.
Everybody, everybody is saying that there's a bunch of calls already and we can't enforce it. So that says that.
Not just, not current, in the past.
Right, well. Again, we, we need to remember what the Fourth of July is all about. And I'm not saying have two weeks of fireworks all night, but we could absolutely have a weekend where. People can let some fireworks off with their kids in the driveway. I mean, I think this has been going on since the eighties.
Well, I think we have the city like that we offered a residence and we provide a public display of fireworks. And I, I, I think we'd have a lot of complaints if we opened it up just because people are, are used to not. Not having it in town.
We always could reverse it back, I guess, if we have a bunch of complaints and we have people coming in, but. I have a lot of complaints about not being able to do it already. So I don't, I don't know. It seems, seems silly to me that Hiawatha, Kansas can't do this and every other town around us can't. Is, I don't know what the difference is, but. Better than just not wanting to lift something that's been on for eighty, for, since the eighties. It just seems, seems like we're just in a, well, this is the way we've always done it. We're not gonna do anything about it because. We've talked about this for the last two or three years.
I, I'm not saying just because it's been this way. I seriously concerns of, of people that have lots of pets in this town. Fireworks are not good for them. I mean, and, and like Nikki said, it's a smaller, I mean, it, it's a question of who we're going to. I don't know, make happy for lack, lack of a better phrase.
With the pets, I'm, I don't even know what that means.
Well. All the fireworks and stuff, I mean, it startles them, they run off. I mean, you, you see stories all the time if you go on Facebook and all that. But, and there's no reason for it if we've got a place for people to go. So that's all I have to say. If you guys want to make a motion, that's fine. If there's any other conversation about it, I'm, I'm okay with that too, but.
Well, I'll make a motion to lift the fireworks ban that's been on in Hiawatha, Kansas since the eighties. And to allow people to have a fireworks stand in town.
I'll second it.
It's been moving a second to lift the fireworks band and to allow fireworks standing in city limits. Um, the only thing to say about the fireworks stand, I think that needs to be a case by case. Um, thing that, that somebody, if somebody truly wants to do that, they need to come and present it and that's something we could change then. But I don't want to just have a, a full, we can have it wherever. That's concerning. I don't want to have a fireworks stand in the middle of downtown Hiawatha and something happens to it. Not saying it will, but.
Comment correct.
It's, it's in here, it has to be permitted.
Yeah.
You have to apply thirty days prior to.
Yeah, for a fireworks stand.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Any further discussion?
Right, partners.
Yeah, it's seven dash three zero four.
That's where it's displayed. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were talking about the display.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, for, for a stand, there's no, the ordinance simply prohibits standing.
I misread that, Andy.
But the display you can get.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you for catching it.
Any further discussion? Not done?
Oh, neighbor.
Aye.
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 Motion does not pass for two, three vote.
Can we, can I make another motion then to just allow how, so that we can at least have a fireworks stand? In town? Because there's nowhere to have fireworks stands right now. That's the biggest problem is nobody wants to. It's hard enough getting the stand going and then you don't, by the time you find a place to do it and then you gotta come to the city. And find a, you know, ask for approval or like. I mean, someone's missing out on an opportunity to, you should, you know, that's.
All right, stay in my way.
Doing this. So we should at least, we're not gonna allow people to shoot fireworks in town. We should at least let someone have a stand.
Andy, do you have any comments about that? About how, how this would best look? Cause I, I still would feel nervous just having a blanket policy. You can have one in town. I don't, but.
Well, I mean, so the ordinance prohibits it now. If you want to take that run at the ordinance and amend it or put some restrictions on it and allow it, there's lots of. Yes. There's such a spectrum of things the commission can do at this point, like. Allow it at any time or restrict it in dates or, you know, um, you could do zoning restriction to keep them out of residential neighborhoods. Uh, more to like the business districts or, you know. Prohibit them completely. So I guess, I mean, if you want to. If the commission is interested in allowing it, we can always take a look at some restrictions. Like I personally live in a resident, I don't know that I want my neighbor to have one next to my house, but. You know, there's other parts of town, I know maybe it would fit, uh, certain dates. That, you know, not all year round, but restricted around that certain time period. If you want to take a look at something like that, we can absolutely. Take a look at something like that.
Because that is good point about the residential areas, just because the, I mean, I, as we, as you just said, I know for a fact the amount of cars that we start getting out there. Um, you, you would need to have a place where there is parking or you have them all on the streets. I mean, it just, it could be a mess. So. I just would, if that were allowed, I would like to see it, see what the restrictions would be.
So yeah, it's April, so we're early enough now. I mean, if you want to take a look at some language like that, you can get with. Eric Brad and I and kind of let us, what you're looking for, we can put something together. Um, that shouldn't be a problem, even if on the next meeting, we can have something I can talk to you. I mean, take a look at the zoning map, cause I know, you know, we talk about First Street, there's some areas that are zoned. Businesses and industrial even that there are no residences around where there's a lot more, I guess, uh, what I want to call them. Accepted practices, business practices in those areas. We could do that if you want to take a look at something like that.
I think if there were, um, you know, I agree with Brian. I think we, that would be a good idea to have something available. That if a person wanted to put up a fireworks stand in a business district with a permit required. I mean, because there has to be some insurance for liability, maybe that they can provide that they are insured, et cetera, for. You know, we've seen fireworks, uh, stands just blow up. So.
Was there a fireworks stand on Kestrel Road at one point?
A long time ago.
Yeah, Mr. Buffett used to have one. He's right across the city limits. He also had one out by. It was one in Walmart parking lot years ago too, though. That could be too, but.
Could have been.
Um. But no, I, I can't remember one. But like I said, if you wanted to permit it. You could take a look at some reasonable restrictions as far as where you want to put it.
Time frame.
I came like a week or two.
I think it's.
Required.
We just had the week before the Fourth of July. When it was out by the lake.
Yeah.
Now it's plenty of time.
Sell, and that was enough time.
Yeah, oh yeah. First two or three days would be hardly anybody coming in. The last two or three days we'd get.
And the nice building out to bed, the lake that sold fireworks.
Yeah, that was, that was my group.
Oh, yeah, I bought them out there.
Yeah. So a lot of fireworks out there, but it was somebody out of from Topeka who had like probably fireworks stands. So it's quite the business for them. It's not an easy thing to do. With they say all the restrictions you have to have and the fire marshal has to approve it and just there's some time. So I I'm not opposed to listening to to how we could do it safely at all. I mean, if if you guys could. Are you on the wait, Brian, till next, next meeting?
Yeah.
Bring something back?
We can bring something back. That's not a problem. We can do it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Which should give everybody enough time to organize. I guess if we get it done in April, you got May and June.
I think it's definite benefit.
I agree.
So we would get some sales tax revenue. Okay, we'll bring something back then.
Okay, thank you.
Building if anybody is interested in doing it, I would allow someone to do that, so.
Yeah, moving on to item five, Urban Belt Constructors Time Extension.
So yes, this is the North Station project that we have going on. And it's been going on for some time. And so a lot of what we've been seeing is some of the delays that we have. Right now, whatever's holding this up is an actuator for a plug valve. The, that we've had a lot of major progress here, especially within the last three weeks, I would say. There's been a lot of progress. I was at out there onsite today and looked at it. And like I I think that we we are getting very, very near to the end of this project. Um, I did have Nolan Groff come today from Olson Engineering, have Joe Garrison from Urban Belt. Available to answer any questions that anybody might have about the progress that we that we have going on at the Northville Station Project. And so at this time, I will put it up to um, any questions that the commission might have as far as. You know, why have the laws have happened or what's been going on out there?
Any updates since last week on when that valve is gonna ship?
At this time, it's still in April.
Is this the only time there's been an extension?
We have granted other extensions before. I believe we've granted two at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, one was early on in the project. Funding agencies.
Yes.
Uh, and then. The. Grit system?
Would you, would you guys mind moving up to the microphone just? If you wouldn't mind? Thank you.
Yeah, so the uh, initially when the project first got awarded, it took. I I want to say six months to get through all the funding agencies with contracts. So that was the initial um, time extension. We did. We have another time extension last winter, I want to say. Well, sometime in there. I had to do mostly with the grit equipment delivery timelines. Um, and now we, um, Joe put it in his letter about plug valve actuator, which is necessary to finish the project and they've missed.
Two?
Two delivery dates. But. Yeah. And eh, we're seeing that on other projects, just to be fully transparent. We've seen a lot of odd things that are still delaying projects. It's just.
Something you don't have any control over.
You're exactly right.
What is, what is, what do these extensions do for us?
These extensions, basically what this does is what what we need to do with these extensions is this allows for the project to. Um, continue with a with a funding that's there available. I know that I had asked, uh. Roland, I think you've talked to USDA and they are on board with this. And and really the agencies that we need to talk to here are USDA and QDHE. And both of these two agencies are on board with it, on uh, on board with this extension. And this is really just to get that, get this project done. And so right now we're under consent order through QDHE and that's really what this project is all about. And this is all the inflow, infiltration that we have here in the city of Hyawatha. And this is the first phase, well, there's really different phases of this project, but. I think the kind of what we have now, this is going going to be phase one A. Is what we call this phase. Phase one B will be a very, very similar project. That's gonna be at the south. Uh, wastewater treatment plant. And really what these legumes are meant to impound that uh, wastewater, that way it doesn't wash out our system. And it really wants that causes us to go out of compliance. Um, and then. I think there's another phase to that, which is going to be a study to see the effects of these first two phases of that project. And so right now, I this, I know this is dragged on just a little bit. There's various reasons for that, but. We're we're very, very near the end of this first phase. And so really that's why, that's what these extensions do. That that just allows us to ex- extend these projects out, make sure that funding is available.
It's not gonna hurt our interest rate or anything like that down the road?
No.
It's it's my understanding that we can use the basin and and dump out of it to the south plant.
Yes.
So with that said, does that, that haven't cleared our consent order until substantial completion?
It does not.
Until we're, well, it won't count until we're done, right?
It won't count until we're done.
We can use it.
Yeah, you can use it, which is the nice thing. But no, until, from the funding agency's perspective, it's kind of weird because KDH funds it and. They also are ensuring the regulatory compliance. From their perspective, project completion is the date. It's not so much when you bring on parts of a project online.
Okay.
It, but again, there's not a. The state is okay. They understand why this is happening. They're not gonna let you drag out a project indefinitely, but it's not as though there's a penalty. Associated with this. There's a realistic understanding from the state that, yeah, we do see these delays and. There there really isn't much to be done for it.
So is this May thirtieth date? Is that a completion date?
Yeah, so that would be basically our substantial completion date, um, which would mean everything is installed and operational. We, we do typically have what we call final completion. After we walk through it, make sure that everything's been picked up and kind of pick up the nuts. The, you know, the the last pieces, um. Exactly, just going through the punch list items, but.
It does look nice out there. One out there, yeah, it's looks a lot better than it did what, three years, four years? Little bit.
I'll make a motion to approve the time extension. For urban belt construction on the North Lift Station project until May thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
I second.
It's been moved moved and segmented to approve the time extension. Any further discussion? Not done? Motion pass five zero. Thank you. Moving on to communications, Brad, is there anything you wanted to say or add to that?
The Brown County uh, C- Commission um, letter that we got. Looks like we need to get some, a little bit of information with them, just our comprehensive plan. Uh, map, map outlining the city boundaries and so we we, that was just here for your information. We need to get them a little extra um, information for them, but other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Letter from Midwest Public Risk, where they're gonna raise the deductibles, is that gonna hit us at all?
It could if we have claims. I mean, it's gonna be, it's one of those things, one of those deductibles. They just in case we do have claims, I mean, that could hit us. Just depends on if we, how many claims that we have.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to governing body comments. Uh, I just have two. Uh, one was, it was exciting to be part of the. Um, official groundbreaking for a little softball field that's going out at the the championship complex. Um, it's gonna look very nice by the time they get all said and done. And once again, kudos to all the people who've been helping with the fundraising. That's. A huge task. And if you haven't been outside, um. Uh, City Hall to see the Mayor Bill Collins bench, you really need to do that, that we had, we opened or had the unveiling of that bench this week too and. Um, so Mayor Bill's gonna keep his eye on you, Don, just right outside. Yeah, so that's gonna be a great place to to sit. So anyway, I, it's, it's a nice addition to our downtown, so. That's all I have. Dave?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Brian?
Do you uh, have any update for potholes and stuff?
Yes, so I, they're trying to go through so far and get the ones that typically are the ones, the ones that are the worst. And then a room to be spreading out into the town and just continue with potholes. And so the ones down by the tracks that. Typically, I mean, everybody always hits. We try to get those first. We we try to keep on top of that one by the school. The high school infuse. We have a different idea on that of how to permanently fix that this year. Uh, so we can add a lot of different things in front of the middle school, you know, where it's the. Asphalt's kind of separated there. We have a plan for that as well. So this is really gonna be. You know, right now, like I said, we've tried to focus on the main corridors, but now we're gonna have spread out into the town itself. And so that that's how we're working with with potholes.
There's a big one out by Walmart.
Yeah, is that the one that's on Iowa Street?
Yeah, um.
We were, I think we were just talking about that one earlier today.
I was trying to find a text message. I was hobby driving something.
Yeah, I think it's a long thing at that intersection. There's some pretty fairly good sized potholes there.
Brad, is there any plan for crack ceiling on concrete streets?
Uh, I have not discussed that with Sean this year yet, no.
Anything else? Or is that, is that it?
Yeah, that'll be it, sorry.
Don't have anything, thank you.
That would be adjourned.
Second.
Moving second to to adjourn. Don? Motion pass five zero.